I'd like to welcome everybody to the Nevada Community School District Board of Directors meeting for June 19th, 2023. And I would like to call this meeting to order and I would seek approval of the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
Mobile, uh, second of the agenda as presented tonight. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Public comment?
None.
Moving into our information phase, we have an insurance renewal. We do this every year. We have Melissa Johnson from Midwest Insurance Company. And would you join us at the podium? So we, you're actually being both filmed and miced.
This is great news. Where's the mic at?
It's up there. See the green light?
Nice job.
And we keep time, you're being told it does pick up everything.
Perfect. And I will not mumble anything.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. Thank you guys for having me. As I was kind of talking to Marty beforehand, unfortunately, I sound like a broken record every year coming here. And it's, we're continuing to have unprecedented weather events along with jury verdicts and cyber incidents. So it's continuing to happen. And unfortunately, it's still happening around us, even though we haven't been impacted at least by this, these last events. We're having a lot of struggle in the insurance world. And so I was also mentioning that while it's good that we have EMC here to write the schools on the property side, unlike personal lines for your homeowners, within the last three weeks, we've had five markets pull out of Iowa, which means they're no longer writing homeowners. This will continue until we probably don't have anyone writing homeowners because obviously with the domino effect, more and more people are not going to want to take on what's at the end. So that kind of trickles into how do you get a home loan, those type of things. So the insurance world is trying to wrap their hands around the losses that we're having and what to charge appropriately for those losses. So in your packet, you have the proposal for this year. You guys have actually the ones, the digital one had my notes on it too, so you can kind of see some of the premiums from last time. But we'll just go over some major changes for this year. Overall, for the blanket buildings, so we have a limit on each building, which is the 100% insured to value. So if we were to lose a building, we would have enough value for that item. We have a blanket that is only 90% to value. It's one of those things that we can save money on, hoping that we don't have everything have one loss. So if you added up all of the buildings, it would equal more than the 99 million that we have listed here. It would be about 10% more. Last year, we were at about 88 million. So that's kind of the difference. We increased about $10 million, or about, actually, it's $12 million this year. And that came from the building values increasing along with the fact that we got rid of the builder's risk, that we did all of the updates to the buildings and added those values into the actual buildings. We have a $25,000 property deductible. One of the things that changed this year is EMC implemented a per-building wind and hail deductible depending on the value of the building. So the middle school, high school has a $75,000 wind hail deductible. And then the elementary school has a $25,000 wind hail, or sorry, a $50,000 wind hail deductible. We'll talk about some options here on how to handle those going forward. So if just going through the property, the, the high school went up about 10 million, the elementary school went up about 3 million. Otherwise, everything else just took an inflation. From the schools that we do insure and that I know are going through projects, these numbers seem to be in line but are continually, you know, being increased. The, the cost to have construction done right now, especially for a public entity, is very, very high. So going through, one of the other things that I'll mention that Marty pointed out was just the school, or sorry, the church that is used as a school. It is actual cash value. And while it assesses very low, in the $100,000 range, this is what it would cost to rebuild minus depreciation. So it's about the cheapest we can get it. One of the things I mentioned to Marty that I said we're talking about with all of our public entities is, do we need to insure absolutely everything? What is, what are we going to do with that if there is a loss? And so I said, if we didn't need that church, we could actually remove coverage altogether. We would still have liability and then you would just cover your debris removal if something were to happen to it. Obviously, we need the school space, but that's kind of an option for later on. If we do end up having more space, we kind of have to get creative with insurance right now and maybe not insure absolutely everything. I'm looking at it more of a catastrophic loss type policy. So moving on, is there any questions on the property side of things? Okay. Crime, everything stayed the same there. General liability, again, no changes there. It just goes off of the audited figures. Those change with whatever we, we complete on audit. The linebacker, we will have an option here at the end. It has, currently has a $1,500 deductible. You've had one claim in the past five years that we paid out about $60,000 and that was just for legal fees. There was no actual settlement on that claim. And so we're looking at what would a $5 or a $10,000 deductible look like? And that's the coverage for all of you making decisions on behalf of the school districts if you were to be sued individually as a board member. Going into the auto, I met with Jason. We moved quite a few buses to the nine-month rating along with taking the replacement costs on the Bluebirds up to 135,000 and all the caravans up to 42,000. So everyone that qualified for that replacement cost, we increased the coverage there to make sure that we could actually replace the vehicles if there was a loss. One of the other things that we did that we were able to get in today, and again, this will be an option at the end, but looked at higher deductibles on the auto. There are currently 1,000 for comp and 1,000 for collision. We looked at 5,000 for comp and 5,000 for collision. This will save about $3,900 a year, but we have had one loss every year for the past four years on auto. So we would have really never had a savings had we done that four years ago. Nothing changed on pollution liability. Work comp, we've struggled with some losses in the most recent years. We went up about $1.1 million in payroll and we, our mod went from a .89 to a 1.11. So that's an automatic increase in the premium of 22%. This all factors off the last three years' experience of your work comp. So as we continue to not have losses, that should go down. If we continue to have losses, that will, will increase. One of the big changes this year is EMC got rid of the group excess umbrella. And the reason for that is we had two school districts have an $8 million auto loss and we were all sharing that umbrella limit. So we didn't think now with the, you know, nuclear verdicts that are happening and the high, high jury verdicts, that it made sense to continue to share those limits anymore. So they discontinued that. They decreased the umbrella that EMC controlled. We used to have it be 5 million. It's now at 3 million. And then we wrote an individual excess policy with Old Republic for $5 million. Before, that was 10 million. So all together, sharing the $10 million limit, we had our own five, so all together we had 15. Now we would have eight. I do have an option out there for another five. The good thing about this is there is no sublimity on sexual abuse and molestation. We used to have our $5 million be maxed out for that sexual abuse and molestation. Now the full 8 million would be used for that. Cyber coverage has remained the same. Again, that's kind of a big deal right now. Deboise is still working through their incident and that's kind of what impacted some of, of these rate increases on top of the fact that they continue to hit public entities and hospitals. So the amount of data that you have. So on the final page, it has the premium summary page. In the electronic copy, you do have the expiry limits. I can kind of walk through that. Property, we're at 169. It was 130 previously. Again, most of that is coming from the $12 million increase in coverage along with a rate increase. Crime didn't change much. General liability went up about 4,000. The linebacker, again, something that we're seeing quite a few lawsuits in, went from 16,000 to about 21,000. The business auto was 36 and that's at about 40. Pollution liability stayed the same. Work comp, again, that came from that mod increase. We were at about 95 and went to 118.
How long would it take us to start? I mean, if we have these dates, perfect. Each year is going to lock that down.
So...
So we don't have a claim on workers' comp?
Yeah.
This time next year?
It goes back your past three years. So '21 to '22, we had 109,000. So that's going to be our most recent year that's on there. So that's going to take two more years to fall off. 2020 to 2021, we had 60,000 in losses. And 2019 to 2020, we had 24. So that's going to drop off, the, the 24,000 one is going to drop off. I don't have in front of me what we had this last year, but I'm pretty sure it was higher. So I see just the mod continuing to increase at this point. Because you're dropping off your lowest year, you're going to put on another higher. So at this point, it's really figuring out, like, do we have any trends? And from what I can see, we don't. Similar with multiple other schools, it's just people not necessarily being super careful. Slip and falls, those type of things. SFM is willing to help with whatever you would need, whether you want them to come in to teacher meetings and talk about safety or talk about appropriate footwear, those type of things. We're continuing to see losses of teachers participating in activities meant for children and not maybe, you know, be like field trips and those type of things where we're seeing losses. So I know that you probably can't tell them that they can't, but it might be something Work comp's a big one, just because that can sway really fast depending on the losses. And we had some history with it in the past and that's when we moved to SFM from EMC and then we were able to kind of bring it back down and now it's, it's back up on the rise. But then, since then, EMC actually made a change that if you move the work comp from them, you actually can't have the rest of the package. So schools that continue to have EMC on work comp, they can't leave to go to SFM. So I feel we're in the right place. We just have to kind of figure out what we can do to help better that number. And a lot of that comes with time off work. If we can keep the time off work to less than three days, it doesn't impact our mod. So whether we can bring them back on light duty or have no time off at all, those factors are really impactful on that mod.
So for clarity's sake, the old guy, dumb guy, are you saying that out-of-school activities as attended by the children with staff attendants, I mean, they were there, there as the adult supervision? I mean, if something happens to our staff member at an activity, that's what you're speaking to right now?
It's, yeah, it's them choosing to go roller skating with the kids rather than being there to chaperone the kids. Or them choosing to put on the sumo wrestling suit to play with the kids and then tearing ACLs, those type of things are what we're seeing happen. So when I say choosing to participate in activities for children, it's when we put on these type of field trips and they're doing the things with the kids.
Me as a district, have we found that? I mean, you, I think you spoke this, but I think I was...
This is kind of like the trend we're seeing in lots of districts. Yours, I don't see necessarily specifically that, but that's, we're seeing an uptick in those type of things. So I just, to get ahead of it, if it's a possibility, those are some of the conversations I would continue to have.
Like us to have internally as far as giving direction to staff?
Yeah. Yep.
Too interested to have sort of work policy in place.
I think that she's right, that's where I'm at right now.
Yeah.
Because the thing is, we are going to look in, I don't think I've ever sat in on one of these and not seen a rate increase. But if there's anything that we can do that precludes a rate increase just by the way we do things and...
Yeah, you can't affect the weather as much as you can impact the...
Yeah. And granted, I mean, it's Iowa, weather happens.
Yep.
But as far as we conduct ourselves on a staffing basis, and I get it because there's some teachers that get drug in, hey, come on, Mr. or Miss, you know, something to do things. Maybe that's not in our best interest and we should just insist that they decline because of this, what we're looking at. Well, and I think that a lot of the work comp stuff is what happens with teachers where they're participating in things. Otherwise, it's a lot of frequent things, probably why I happen to person. Like somebody slipping, one of the food service workers slipping in the kitchen just because there was some raw material on the...
See, I can accept that, but if it's a dodgeball injury?
Yeah.
Come on. The only thing that might be tricky, just thinking through some different field trips, teachers, teachers that are on a field trip and students are going on a walk or something and they're in a supervision, might step on something.
That's what life happens.
Right. Extraordinary risk. And that's something that, to me, that's not like a participation, that's just falling under...
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Falling under the supervision role. So we will be defining... Even in that situation, that would be a mark against our...
Yep. Anytime they're on work, they're going to be. So I was incorrect, your last year was actually pretty good. I do have it on here. We only had about 1,500 total. So once that rolls on, you're rolling off a 24,000.
This will come down.
It'll come down a little bit. It's going to be getting that 106,000 one-off that will be, be the big one. So like this year, it was taking out the trash, got stung by a hornet, had allergic reaction. So again, nothing, nothing big there. A lifting lower back strain and then another strain. Those are the three that we had, had this year. And then the big one in '22 would be slipping on ice and, a slip and fall on ice. And then we were moving some wrestling mats. We had a strain from that. And another strain, went on a field trip. All the students were meant to jump and she felt a pop in her knee. So just little things like that. Again, I haven't seen as much with you guys on the field trips, but I'm seeing a lot more of it elsewhere right now. But yeah, a lot of, a lot of knee strains and those type of things. And to your point, it's unfortunate because if those things started outside of work and, you know, happened to get worse during a work activity, it is work comp. But yeah, your return to work would be the best thing that you guys could do to make sure that that person had something to do to get back on, on the job as soon as possible. Then obviously just directing that care, making sure that we don't have a school nurse saying, hey, like, go ahead, take a week off, like, let, let SFM do that part.
I would think that a school nurse wouldn't be in a position to be definitive.
Would it be? Yeah. On, on a work comp loss, but like when, when they first happen, a lot of times they'll go to the nurse first and that's kind of where it starts, like...
Action starts.
Mm-hmm. And so we always tell them, you know, call the 800 number, triage it through SFM.
Yeah, let's not get into the, oh my God, I think naturally just because that's your... Well, medical, you know, medical personnel in the building. They will always default to the most prescriptive, safe, where if you get into, say, an athletic situation, it's just like, we can rehab you back into something much quicker. And we, I'd rather take the definition outside of the school.
Yep. Have the nurses focus on the children and let SFM focus on the work comp.
SFM direction of Story County occupation.
Yep.
Do all employees get a little card that says who to call in case of an accident or something? Like at Story County, we get a little card that we...
If they don't, we have the ability to get them.
Okay. We don't have a return-to-work policy for a workplace compensation claim, do we?
How is, I don't know, I defer on that one. Not really, we just, we basically defer this, that one, what they suggest.
But if you have light work duty, like if all their option is, is to FSM, is tell them that, like, you either go back to your job or we don't have anything for you. If there's something light duty that they can do specifically in those roles of like janitor, cook, those type of things. Because from an insurance perspective, they should probably be able to be a teacher still and sit in the classroom, depending on what it was. We've had some concussion situations where they did that.
Well, I will leave it to the administration team to, after hearing this, you're writing down quite a bit.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. It's just like, if we have somebody that slips and twists a knee taking out garbage, can we find something else that they don't have to be so physically demonstrative that they can be a participant or an observer of a school activity and be present?
Yep.
So that it doesn't roll up to that?
Right. Yeah. It's that loss of time that really gets to you.
That's where we get things done.
Yep.
Well, this has been an informative discussion. We haven't done this one before.
Yeah. It's because for the past, I mean, we were kind of riding the mod down when I came in.
Yes.
And so we really haven't had the uptick since I...
Well, I mean, once you get to the top of the mountain, how do you climb off of it? I think that's the conversation we just had. That, I mean, if somebody's hurt, they're hurt. I couldn't argue about that. But if there's a way that we can be inventive on behalf of the district and the taxpayers that support it?
Right.
I think we should have policies or directives that reflect how we get people in a position that doesn't roll into this part of the school year that we have to say because. So thank you for your insights.
Yeah. So return to work and then not participating in child abuse. Be the two things.
Right. No dodgeball.
No dodgeball.
Do you foresee some teacher, like, backlash for that? Because I just see, like, we have to weigh the pros and cons of, like, we're telling the teachers they can't participate with the kids.
Right.
Some of the teachers are, that's going to be the funnest part of their job.
Right.
Or the kids, that's going to be the highlight of their experience that their teacher joined in with them.
It, we'd probably have to put a list together. What else currently have to be at each building? Activities, field trips that teachers will participate in and evaluate.
We have adult conversations in this district with staff and administration. I think that we could get to a point where, I don't say negotiate it, but it's just like, there are some things that clearly work in behalf of the district that, you know, I mean, we lose traditions and we start traditions. And it's not the end of the world.
Yeah. Yeah, in Ohio, like, I don't believe that this year, about two years ago, I think it was like a staff three-on-three basketball game against the kids. You know, there's some former Nevada athletes, graduates that are teaching in the middle school that participated. And I know it was a cool aha moment for kids to be like, whoa, I didn't know Blank was that athletic, you know?
Yeah.
And it is a relationship builder.
Oh, yeah.
Gives them some more credibility.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I think to your point, it might be worth us evaluating what's currently happening and what kind of draws the line.
Bernie Stevenson's dad blew out his Achilles tendon in a pickup game. We were playing while he was at school. It sounded like a 22 got shot.
Oh, wow.
Does it happen? Yeah, I watched it happen one day. I was playing in the game. So, but great, thank you for sharing in a way that we're just trying to get to the point where it's kind of a fuzzy nebulous thing to the point where what can we do in regards to how we conduct ourselves on a day-to-day basis that we're not making claim after claim after claim?
Right. The next section is the umbrella. So as I mentioned, they got rid of the excess. So we got you a quote for individual excess. So if you look, the umbrella limit would be that $3 million. It was 7,200, it's now 57, but we went from five to three. And the big change is that individual, while we were sharing it with everybody else and we were paying 3,700, now to have 5 million, it's 11,000. So this is kind of where you decide as a district, you got, you bought into that 15 million, did you need the 15 million? But we have seen the $8 million auto losses from busing accidents. So something to consider there. We're at 8 million right now. And then cyber coverage went from about 11,000 to 13. So an overall increase of about 25%. Again, part of that coming from property, part of it coming from exposure. So we put some optional quotes together on the bottom. The first one is kind of what I mentioned. We have every building listed at 100% insured to value. So we want that so that if something happens, we have enough money to cover it. But we have a blanket limit that we share between all the buildings. The only time we would need to use the blanket limit for everything is if we got wiped out completely by a tornado. We're not at 100% on that blanket limit. So it's a way to save money is we've always been at 90%. I just want to put it out there so that you're aware of it, but if you wanted to go 100%, which would be 111 million blanket, it would be an increase of 8198. That's that first option.
So true. Sorry. To understand that, so the current is, is still at 90, right?
Current is, and it always has been.
Always had that.
Yep. But with everything happening on the property side and all of the...
Well, that was my question, actually, exactly what you, what you suggested, a catastrophic storm, like, you had, like, you know, like, God forbid we have something like that happen.
Like Marshalltown.
Marshalltown.
Yep.
Or Parkland, or, yeah, like that. So, so that we could then extend the blanket to 100% or property value to 100% with the blanket limit of 110, like you said, for an additional 80, 200 dollars.
Yes. Yep. So if you think about your district a little bit different maybe than Collins-Maxwell, those two schools are very separate. So we hope that, you know, nothing would ever happen. So them having a 90% blanket might make more sense than us having a 90% blanket.
Traded in one spot.
Yep.
Since you added this one, even worse.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So all of our, our limits right kind of down the same path.
We are as a district is pretty right. Yeah.
Yeah. And what's interesting about this, I mean, since we've had so many cat losses, it's hard to say 110 million would even be enough. Just because if you think about, if, if we as a district got wiped out, so would the city. And think about all the contractors, even right now, we're struggling to find enough roofing contractors to take care of the hail damage we've just had over the past couple of months. And so prices get, you know, increased. This is constantly a moving number, which is what, you know, for the past five, six years that I've been here, has made this go up so much and why insurance companies are struggling, but to the point of at least we still have this right now. You know, where other companies are saying enough is enough, like, we can't take on any more property exposure. EMC is, you know, saying, let's just try to figure out a way to do it more effectively. And that's kind of the next step where they said, hey, we're going to go higher deductibles. This is going to be a per-building deductible for these items and it's going to be only applied to wind hail. So what we did is we went out and we found a market that will buy that back down. So we have 75,000 on the high school, middle school, 50,000 on the elementary school and every other deductible is 25,000. If we bought the buyback down policy, so what I did is I did it so it'd buy it down to the 25,000 that we're used to, it'd be 30, pretty much $4,000 a year for the high school and about $3,000 a year for the middle school. So you're going to spend about $7,000 so that you don't pay an extra $75,000 altogether if we were to have an incident on both schools. I think it's kind of an amazing product. It's pretty brand new because this is, we're just starting to see these large deductible increases. So it's something that was just recently created. I don't know how long it will last. Obviously, if we continue to have weather events and we use these policies for them to pay out 75,000 and only collect 7,000, it won't go on for super long, but I think it makes sense for right now. Options four and five are the linebacker. As I mentioned, we only had that one loss in the past five years for wrongful termination and the limit that was paid was just for defense. But looking at a $5,000 deductible, you would save $2,000. So it would take about two years to make up. A $10,000 deductible, you'd save about $6,000. So again, about a year and a half, two years to make up. Number six is your comp and collision. So $1,000 for comp, it's going to be your, your fire, your vandalism, your hail. Moving that to 5,000, collision, that 5,000 would save $4,000 a year. As I mentioned, you've had one loss every year for the past four years, so it would have been a wash if we did it in the past. That was a pretty impressive savings. When Brian asked me about this, I was like, it's not even worth it. Like, most companies, the actuarial side of it doesn't go that high on these things, but like companies are getting more and more into it because of the fact that we need to see more increased deductibles. And then as I mentioned, you had 15 million before as an umbrella limit. Now you have the eight on top of, of your base limit. But to add, to make that, that individual excess limit from five to 10 would be an extra 6,600 a year, which brings you back to the 15 million you had as a group. So really, that's thinking through, did you need 15 million or was it because of the the fact that we had access to a ten million dollar shared limit?
Which went away.
Which went away. We don't have access to anymore. Sometimes it's hard to go down from coverage when you had it before.
Right.
You hate to say like, is it necessary or not seeing some of the losses that we've seen, but you also have to financially, does it make sense?
I'll leave it up to the board, but typically what I do with liability insurance is get as much as we can. We can what if, what if ourselves too dawn tomorrow, but stuff happens and you're just thankful that it's not you and it's a neighbor or somebody out of state, but I have comfort in the thing. It's just like, okay, you know, you're tweaking it. I like how you're trying to pull us back, but yet walk us back into something at less dollars. And that gets us into a place that just like, you know, somebody can always armchair quarterback a decision that we'd make here tonight and say that well, you would've, should've, but it's just like, okay, folks, we take our experiences, what has happened in the past, the best advice we can solicit, you know, we've got a good relationship and it works. And it's just like, here's where we're at, here's where you think we should go. We look at the little things as to regards to our claims and our evaluations and you say this is what we think is reasonable on this date certain, this night. And this is the information portion of the meeting, but we will return back here very shortly to act on this as presented or any changes we suggest being made. So now would be a good time to ask questions. Melissa, she's done a very good job tonight and I appreciate the back and forth because that gets us to a place that we get to be very good representatives for the district's behalf financially.
Tom and I were trying to figure out what if we took all the optional quotes, do you have an amount on that?
If you wanted all of them?
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't do, we wouldn't do all of them because two and three would be, well, two and three would be one, but you would have to decide between four and five.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So you figure eight, those sevens, fifteen, say we went with a ten thousand dollar deductible, we're back down to nine. And then if you go to five, so eleven thousand dollars if you went with the highest deductible.
We partially self-insure on health insurance, so probably doing it.
Not going to have like twelve, five?
I guess, but.
So we were calculating, accepting one, two, three, six and seven, and then calculating the savings of about six thousand with five, is that what you were saying?
Uh, I came up with a twelve thousand, five hundred dollar increase if you went with all those options.
I was only off seven thousand.
So I took the eight of the first one. I took the eight of the first one. With seven of the second one at fifteen.
Taxpayers never know.
And then I took number five, so that brought it down to nine. And then added the savings of the four.
Yeah.
And so we're at five and then added the, so about eleven five increase.
So whoever's making the motion needs to be clear on what they're saying here. Tom?
Why that person? I'm not sure. I go off seven thousand dollars.
You had, you had your calculator out.
Yeah.
You're the guy.
Well, we levy for the management fund for the, to pay for the insurance, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
And that includes health insurance?
That's strictly liability insurance. Probably insurance. Five hundred and thirty-nine thousand subtract out the whatever premium will be, whatever's left over that can be applied to any deductibles.
So figure you would end at four hundred and eighteen, right? Four hundred and eighteen thousand. So then you'd have a hundred and twenty-one left for deductibles.
So your motion is going to take into account, Tom? One, two and three?
So accepting optional quotes, one, two and three, accepting the linebacker with a ten thousand dollar deductible, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what everyone was, okay? And then are we going to accept seven?
I recommend we would.
Okay.
Isn't that how you described it as going from the fifteen to the ten and the back and two?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, we would be back at fifteen million as a district, so the coverage would be the same as we've had in the past, except we wouldn't be sharing it.
Let's listen.
And then what about six?
I told, I told Melissa we have a lot of stuff that sits out.
Yeah.
And the positive of that is if we're talking hail, we have one deductible. So it wouldn't be five thousand dollars on every bus that's out. We would pay one deductible and it would cover everything, everything for that incident. It's a per-claim deductible, not a per-vehicle. And if we actually had one of the schools get hit, the vehicles are free. So they take the highest deductible. So if we had, you know, if we ended up having the middle school get hit, we would pay that deductible and then the buses would just be.
That happens here.
Yep.
So assuming all that is, is an increase of eleven thousand, five hundred to the previously stated summary, that's really only a three percent increase above what we're looking at without doing anything, so. But for that to work, it seems like a relatively small piece of mind for all that coverage, especially considering some of the benefits we get from that.
Yeah, I think we had a pretty good discussion as far as trying to do, walk back our workers' comp in regards to maybe that's where, you know, if we're going to try to get a savings year over, we look hard on how we operate day-to-day.
One of the best things about moving to SFM is that's their specialty. They are a monoline work comp company, so they will actually come in and help you write the return program, along with facilitate any of those discussions.
Well, this is just nothing more than the information phase getting to the point we will bring you back to action and to. And then we will act on it.
Okay.
So anybody got any questions? This has been a very good conversation, Melissa. Anybody?
Just so I'm clear, number six, are you guys saying you want to drop number six?
Understanding us, yes, right?
Yeah, that was the one that was hanging out there.
Yeah, if we don't, then it's about a fourteen thousand dollar.
So really, we only dropped off number four because we took number five?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Tom, practice up.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope, if you just give it a few minutes, we got some housekeeping to do and we'll get right back to you. Dr. Astmas, I'd see some good news there that you brought us tonight.
Okay, so coming to you tonight just to give a quick overview on our school achievement report for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This will include majority of our assessments throughout the year, FAST assessments, and then also ISAP results also. The ISAP results are just initial results, they're not official. Those will come from the state in July and I'll kind of explain that process a little bit more once we, once we get to that part. But our first part here is our, our district long-term goals. So our goal for every, every year that I've been here, even back being a middle school assistant principal, has been try and get our kindergarten through sixth graders to be at or above eighty percent above the benchmark on all FAST assessments. So our data is a little bit unique because the system automatically pushes EK students also into our kindergarten class. So sometimes our numbers are a little bit tricky. It's important to remember that, again, our EK class is part of our kindergarten numbers. So you can kind of see where we were at. Started out in the fall at seventy-five percent, then jumped to seventy-nine percent in the winter and then had a little bit dip, a little bit of a dip back down to seventy-eight percent. I did include, the figures or went through the figures just to see where we're at if we did pull our EK students. And again, we're just a, a little bit off that eighty percent, but moving in the right direction. Our short-term goal was taking, or excuse me, our more specific goal to first and fourth graders was again, looking to get that group to eighty percent. And for the first time since I've done this or even seen this data, we were able to achieve that in the spring of two thousand twenty-three at eighty-one percent. So that's a, a huge celebration for our elementary. Also, obviously the students and the teachers all involved in that. So the good news is we'll have to redo that goal for next year and bump that up maybe eighty-two, eighty-five percent, which, I mean, when you think about that eighty-five percent of students at or above the benchmark, it is pretty impressive and something we're very proud of.
You've come to us with a lot of changes in the way you approach classroom. Would you contribute or attribute anything that you've recently done to that improvement?
Personally, I would say it's a direct correlation to, to two things. Our teachers being completely invested into providing personalized and individualized instruction to students based on need. And then the second part for the elementary specific would be the, the use of the ESAR funds that we use to implement across-the-board curriculum literacy footprints in ELA and then Bridges in math this past year. And we haven't had that in the past. It's kind of been a period your standards, get your, we gave them the what, which was the standard, or excuse me, we never gave them the what or the how. Now we're giving them the what and letting them kind of come up with the how as far as curriculum goes. So I would have contributed to both, a consistent curriculum and then also the buy-in from the teachers.
Well, when you talked about the math change, you said that you're going to see, I think, I remember you expressly saying that you're likely to see some improvement because of this approach.
That's what we were hoping for. The curriculum program would sell that you'd probably take three years to see that increase. But yeah, our data, our data shows that, yeah. It, it is important to note though that FAST is a screener. It doesn't directly tie to Iowa core curriculum. It's simply used as a screener, so it, it is important to note that as, as we look through this data. Next literacy goal that we had at Central, and this was specific to, to the building, was for ninety-two percent of our kindergarten through fourth graders to be at grade level or show at least one year's worth of growth in reading. This is new for us. Actually, this would be year two, where we're doing individual leveling of every student, specifically in the spring, but also taking a look at some students that might have fallen behind at the fall and the winter also. So again, shooting to make sure that our students are at grade level or they made at least one year of growth, so maybe bridging that gap for learners that aren't quite at a grade level yet. We met the score. I think we're actually at ninety-two point two percent. So again, that's something we'll have to, have to switch for next year as well. So this is another, another plus, another bonus and another celebration for Central. If you, any questions, anytime, just pop up and shoot them at me here as we kind of go building by building, assessment by assessment. So digging into our early reading data, this is taking a look at grade, their current grade level. So you can see kindergarten is obviously because they weren't with us in the fall or winter or during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That's why there's NA, so there's no data in those areas. Again, it's important to note our EK students are included in this kindergarten number. And the expectations as far as early reading goes from winter to spring is a huge jump. It's kind of been a trend for us over the years and other school districts across the state where they see a dip in their percentages from winter to the spring. Again, this is kind of because of the expectations that's within FAST during that time. Our first graders, you can see they had that same trend last year where they went from seventy-five to seventy-three, but again, made a, an increase here up to eighty-one percent, which, which is great to see a nine percent, right around ten percent of, of that class. So again, good to, good to see things moving in the right direction. See some bigger jumps in our second, third and fourth graders. And this was one of the selling points for us for literacy footprints was the impact that this program would have on students as they kind of begin to develop their reading skills, pushing them from the grade levels of first and second and up to kind of individualized readers, if that makes sense, as they get to third and fourth grade. So a, a, a great trend line that we're seeing. Second grade, I mean, a twenty-two percent jump is, is a pretty big jump. The thing we're excited about is looking at the N side. You know, that average eighty-two, seventy-nine, eighty-five percent for our second to fourth graders is above eighty percent, which again, was our goal. So moving, moving in the right direction in those areas. Our middle school i- is kind of always a, a unique situation with a variety of different things that are taking place. Students are not only adjusting to a new building, but also a completely different schedule where they're moving class to class and just sometimes takes a little bit of adjustment with things. Obviously, the two figures that jump out would be the sixth grade data and then the eighth grade data as well. In talking with Mr. Snyderman and Mrs. Huber, we've made a little bit of a shift this past year with the way that we structure our Monday PD time. So in the past, the middle school has just had one learning team that they would just kind of work with throughout the entire year. Now we have a learning team that's specific to, to a coach for a TLC position and then they have a grade level team and then they have a content level team. So with that new structure, next year as we move into year two of that format, one of the key staples that the ELA team is focusing on is developing common, common expectations or writing prompts across the board and common rubrics that will be used in all content areas. So even if you have a, maybe a writing assignment within science, it'll fall back on the rubric that was constructed by our, our experts, our ELA teachers to kind of have some more consistency and maybe some cross-curriculum instruction that's taking place. So we're hopeful that will have an impact. Also talked a lot about, okay, the one outlier also on the other side is seventh grade. What happened in seventh grade to make such a huge jump?
Don't you traditionally have trouble?
Seventh grade in the past typically has been, but that was also with that, with the multi-age setup in the middle school.
Right.
Where multi-age was still alive in fifth and sixth grade and then seventh grade, everybody came together. With that switch, we're kind of seeing a, a little bit of a change. In talking to the seventh grade team, they really put a heavy emphasis on relationship building with students and, and that was kind of a key focus. It's not to say that the other, the other grade levels didn't do that, but just kind of maybe teach, talking with our other teams about maybe just some small little things, maybe from a motivational standpoint, maybe from an us standpoint as far as growth goes in, in working with all the grade levels, which we can all improve on across the board. So that might be one little tidbit that each team can kind of take away from the big jump for seventh grade in, in our A reading. Comparing ourselves to Hartlin AEA, then also the state, this is going back before COVID. So fall of two thousand nineteen, we're kind of at our high point until this year. So we're at seventy-nine percent for, for our FAST literacy benchmark proficiency. And you can see we saw the impact of COVID and then have kind of seen things ramp back up and now we've been pretty consistent in those high seventies. The goal for, for our teachers and for Central in our fifth and sixth grade is to move that up past the eighty percent and keep moving towards the mid-eighties. You can see the gains or the jumps that the AEA and then also the state have made are somewhat a little bit inconsistent. Three percent jump, then one percent duck in the AEA. The state saw the same thing and it's kind of ironic, but we saw the same thing also. We made a little bit of an increase in winter and then dipped down. So it's not like we're an outlier compared to what's happened with other districts. The good thing for us is we're starting at a much higher spot and finishing at a much higher spot.
We have some very impressive academic schools in our AEA catchment area. I mean, who is ahead of us? I mean, there's our column. Who would be the school that's?
I can't see it. I don't have access to it. I'd have, I mean, I could go through forward notes, I guess, and see if other districts are presenting the data. I can take some guesses with those and they would probably correlate to districts that have, have some enrollment demographics that might be lower on different sides of things, whether it's special ed or, you know, whatever populations. But without actually going in, I honestly can't.
That was impressive to be almost ten percentage points on that AEA area. There's some very good academic schools.
Yeah, and the, and the nice thing is we don't necessarily have to focus anymore about where we're at with those other districts. We're just more focused on what can we do, can we continue to improve because we've moved the bar so high. Jumping to the math side, so again, this is our first year with Bridges. And again, you can kind of see the trend, it's similar to the ELA. Again, it's important to note that EK is included in our kindergarten, kindergarten figures. Taking a look at the kindergarten data, the way Bridges is, is developed and designed to be implemented is a kind of a different way that all of us were probably taught math and the way that our teachers have been teaching math previously. There's a heavy focus on developing conceptual understanding first of concepts and then working towards fluency. That's been a complete new concept for our pre-K and our kindergarten teachers and can't really put finger on exactly. And can't really put finger on exactly what it was, just because it's year one that's had this. But definitely something that our, our central team is, is knowledgeable about and kind of focusing in, okay, what supports can be put in place for EK, our kindergarten teachers to kind of get them up to that expectation level. First grade, I mean, when you're talking eighty-five, eighty-five, eighty-six percent, it's a very high, high percentage. So that's, that's great to see. Of course, we're still focused on, okay, what can we do for the fourteen percent in that case that aren't meeting those needs? And working to find some interventions next year that could be in place with our math schedule. Again, with it being year one of a completely new system, trying to find time as we go into year two that can kind of be across the board that all grade levels can incorporate into their math time is the focus for how to, how to tackle those. And then next, we have probably the most impressive data that we're here to share tonight, specifically fourth grade, ninety-eight percent. Is, is a very high number. Same thing with ninety-one and ninety percent for those classes. So I'm really excited in, in, in the data that, that came out here from our spring FAST. Now the challenge is to ensure that we continue that trend and do everything we can to, to move that ninety percent to the mid nineties to a hundred percent. Which is just kind of, I don't know, it almost makes me laugh to hear myself say that. But it's a, it's a tribute again to, to our teachers and their buy-in to their curriculum and the implementation of it as well.
Have you seen this?
Uh, yes, I think, yeah, I think it was shared with them at the end, at the end of the school year. I know our TLC leadership team has seen it.
Is this a Saturday?
Yeah, Wednesday. Yep. Want to get it to you all before we.
Well, sometimes it's them, sometimes it's us.
Math, again, we, we see some red in, in some different areas. This is also going to be an area of focus for our, our content teams at the middle school next year. So we'll have an ELA team that's going to focus on some consistency from a rubric standpoint. Math is going to do the same thing. Of course, it's a little bit tricky to do cross-curricular math work. But one thing that we are going to be able to implement next year is full implementation of math. Content teachers providing interventions to students that have heard those. In the past, we really haven't had the flexibility with our schedule because of the high number that needed the interventions. With the current fourth grade class coming in, that's not only two percent of those students are, are needing interventions. And then kind of the, the lower number specifically at the, going into seventh grade and then also honestly, fifth grade. It just opens up some flexibility with our scheduling to be able to ensure that those content teachers are providing intervention. So we hope that will maybe alter some of these numbers as well moving forward. ISAP data. So again, it's important to note that this is the percentage, the percentages that you're seeing are proficient students that assess with us. Some of these students might not necessarily be our home students at the end of the day because it falls back to the district that a student spent a hundred and ten days of the school year with. So let's say that a student moved in on March twelfth. They would be counted within this percentage, but they would actually be pulled out when the final results come in. Same thing with students that participate, uh, might have been with us until March and then moved to another district. Their scores will come back to us. So I think last year we were pretty close with these projected numbers. Think it was off two to maybe three percent on a couple of the grade levels. But I would say plus or minus five percent. This is probably where we will, we will see. So starting at the elementary in, in ELA, eighty-four percent, eighty-nine percent for that third and fourth grade class. Our fifth grade class did take a little bit of, of a drop. If you look back to them as third graders, fifty-three percent, which was pretty low. And then a huge jump moving to fourth grade to eighty-five percent. And then now a little bit, little bit of a drop here down to sixty-seven percent. So in talking with Mr. Snyderman and again, Mrs. Huber, the question, is this just an outlier piece of data? Or is this kind of a trend of, of things that we've seen? With the high percentage of almost twenty percent, that obviously is pretty concerning. So taking a look at some different things that we can do on our side, we're evaluating some curriculum programs to potentially implement. We've had conversations with our AEA friends on some different things for us to, to, to look at. Right now, we're kind of digging into the effectiveness of intro to literature and then intro to reading, which are two programs that are actually fifth through sixth grade programs. So we're taking a look at those and how we can get our, get those implemented, get PD to our teachers to be able to teach those with fidelity. Also specifically to fifth grade, Mrs. Argonbright is going to implement some of the practices of literacy footprints that is being implemented kindergarten through fourth grade at Central with, with some small group time during her writing class. So we're hopeful that just that additional reading, whether it's ten to twenty minutes every single day within writing time, could also have an impact or potentially have an impact on, on those numbers. So that's a class we're, we're looking closely at as they transition to sixth grade. And then of course, as our fourth graders coming into fifth grade, to do everything we can, can do to ensure that we don't see that kind of same slide take place again. The other class that jumps out again, of course, is, is the eighth grade class, which we kind of saw consistency with FAST. So we're hoping that the common writing rubrics that we're developing, implementation of those from our writing teams of our fifth through eighth grade ELA teachers can have a profound impact upon this as well. The other one that jumps out, of course, is the eleventh graders, thirteen percent. To be honest, usually our eleventh grade data is kind of a coin flip, just because of the motivation that the students sometimes have or may not have. This test specifically, the, the reading test, I believe, was given on, I want to say, day one. And then their last day of testing is when we do the, the language and then the writing prompts. We don't really have anything that's sticking out or anything that kind of shows that this is a trend for this class in years past. So I know Dr. Einswiler, Mr. Smith are taking a look at potentially incorporating some interventions for ELA specific, increasing some learning lab, potentially implementation to assist with students. But as far as this goes, again, with eleventh grade, again, it, it, it's tricky. This is their last year of assessments. Not quite sure how motivated, you know, students are.
How big is the class, the eleventh grade class? Numbers? Because when I'm looking at thirteen percent, how many kids are we talking about? A hundred and ten?
I usually say we're anywhere from one fifteen to one twenty-five at high school.
Oh, ten percent of that, we're looking about fifteen students here.
Yeah, yeah. That's also our, our highest class that also is on, still kind of on that online platform since COVID a couple of years ago. So I don't know if that plays a role into it, you know? Also, I know that they do have a separate testing environment that we do set up for the kids to come in. I know some of them came in and tested with me individually. We had some challenges getting them in to, to actually complete the assessment. So that could maybe play a factor, you know, into it as well.
If, if your theory has any legs to it, this could be self eliminating?
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Uh, jumping to our, our math data, again, that fourth grade class, ninety-four percent. We're just talking about a handful of students that were not proficient. Second and first grade, oh, I'm sorry. One other thing with eighth grade, I think it's important to note is we did see a large increase of move-ins into the district from the winter to the spring. So that may also potentially play a role with the increase of that. It was almost double digits into that class from the winter FAST testing period into the spring and then of course into the ISAP. So some of those students might actually be removed out if they weren't served by us for a hundred and ten days. Math, uh, the one number that jumps out, of course, is ninth grade. Taking a look, that's eleven percent drop. And if you look actually down one grade level and over to the left, you'll see that last year we saw eight percent decrease, or excuse me, yeah, an eight percent decrease in our, in our students from twenty-one to twenty-two when that group was in ninth grade. So taking a look, what, what is going on with our ninth grade students? Is it a systems issue? One thing that jumps out right away would be our pathway. So our ninth graders have the option of taking Algebra One or they can take Algebra One A as freshmen, which is essentially the first half of Algebra One. And then take Algebra One B as a sophomore, which is the second half of Algebra One. That's a nice pathway for students that, that kind of need that direction based off of need. However, the ISAPs don't like that because they are assessed fully on Algebra One as ninth graders and then geometry as tenth graders and then Algebra Two as eleventh graders. So that could be one part of it, is they're only halfway through Algebra One. Could play a role. That, that's just kind of something that we've always seen. So in looking and talking with this, with, with Dr. Einswiler, Mr. Smith, they are going to be incorporating an increase in math labs for students specifically that might not have met proficiency as ninth graders, eighth graders, or might not have met a math proficiency as well within math. So we will have an increase in learning lab opportunities. Those are going to be taught and led specifically by our math teachers and then also our special education teacher that is our math specialist as well. So we're hoping that will be a proactive approach to assist with these students and provide an, an increase in interventions for students as they transition into their freshman year. Our science data, this is a little bit tricky because this isn't comparing grade level to grade level. This is comparing the fifth grade class from this year to the fifth grade class from last year to the fifth grade class from two years ago. Because these are the three levels that science has offered. This kind of has the least weight, if you will. It does not impact the school performance profile at all from the state. There's no impact to, to your science data, whether it's from participation, growth, proficiency. It's just a data piece that, that's offered, provided. It's a little goofy, in my opinion, specifically in tenth grade because students are assessed over all ninth through eleventh grade clustered standards. So biology, chemistry, there are also some physics, physics questions that are in there in addition to earth, earth science, life science, physical science, environmental science and space. Our pathway for students is to take integrated science, which is all those clustered classes I just said. And then biology as a sophomore and then chemistry as a junior. We probably have fifteen percent of our students, twenty percent that take chemistry as a sophomore. So they've actually completed where they're supposed to be. So that's just kind of gives you a little bit of perspective of what's being assessed as opposed to what's actually being taught in classrooms. I can't honestly put my thumb on anything here for trends that we see. Don't take this the wrong way, but we don't honestly put a whole lot of stock into this just because of the impact that it has and the lack of direct correlation to standards that are being taught in the class at each of these grade levels. It is our last assessment that we offer at the end of the week. A little bit tricky because fifth graders are the only, fifth, eighth and tenth are the only classes that are assessing during that time. So we have entertained the idea of trying to kind of switch that around. Problem again still lies, third, fourth, sixth, ninth and eleventh students don't have to assess. So it's kind of tricky to make a schedule where these students are assessed and these students aren't. But still take the data, still share it, still look for some common themes that we're, we're seeing, whether it's for some domains understanding that are being shared with our teachers. But again, it, it, we don't honestly put a whole lot of stock into this just because of the setup. And I think that's common with other districts, at least with other curriculum directors I've spoken to.
Cody, to your knowledge, has there been any talk about changing the way they assess the science data? To more better align with how it's actually being taught in, among the grade levels?
Yeah, I haven't heard any conversations along those lines. It would make sense to me to have them assess that eleventh grade because you know how the students are finished through that.
Right.
But yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything. I would honestly suggest like third, sixth and tenth start, middle, and then yeah, might be able to see a little bit more. But yeah, on the different presentations and different things that I attend, this kid, they don't talk about science data. So yeah, I can't answer that. Just some other annual percentages here that we just calculated this and received this back from our SRI submission to the state. These are average daily attendance percentages. Anything really kind of sticks out in here? Anything trend wise that's, that's changing any direction? Last year, you know, seeing Central below ninety-four percent was a little concerning considering it's the first time that's ever happened. If you're looking top to bottom, so at least happy to see an increase. We kind of shoot for ninety-five percent, kind of as our goal number. So you can see two buildings achieved that. Yeah, nothing, nothing really too glaring that comes out of this. Our graduation rate, so we're able to calculate our graduation rate for a class of two thousand twenty-two, which would have been last year. And then also our five-year rate for our class of two thousand twenty-one. You can see we're still well above the state average, which was just a hair under ninety percent last year. Nothing really kind of sticks out as far as what, what we're seeing data wise. Of course, our goal is always to get to a hundred percent in these areas. A little bit tricky sometimes with, with individuals that are above the age sixteen having the option to be able to drop out. I don't know, in my opinion, it's one of the worst things that we do education wise to allow students to have that opportunity. But it's kind of out, out of our control. Do want you to note the ninety-four point four percent for the class of two thousand one. That is significant because that then impacts and goes against our dropout. That we saw an increase with that, eight students last year. Some students moved and never re-enrolled into another school district. If that happens, that falls back on us for our dropout numbers. So we did have some, some students also that went that path, but also some, some seniors from two thousand twenty-one that did not end up graduating, explored another option and that of course impacts us with that number. We do have some preventions that we're putting in place. Our at-risk team is outstanding. Elizabeth, again, Jody here. If students are falling through the cracks through them, it's, it's really surprising just because of the, the time and effort that they put in, not only to get the students here, but also from motivation standpoint. Uh, our annual report I'll have for you as soon as I have finalized results from the state for our ISAPs results. That usually comes the end of July, August area. And in that annual report, which we also put on the website, we go through a kind of a final ISAP breakdown for each grade level, subgroups. Also then are able to compare ourselves to the district, local AEA's or other districts, local AEA's and then the state. We'll have our, our ACT trend data, usually get that in September-ish, specific to the class of two thousand twenty-three. And then other PSAT results and then post-secondary enrollment trends that are delivered from the state, usually around September, October. So once we'll have that, we'll make that available. If there's any huge changes or jumps that are significant to share, I'll, I'll come back and share those with, with all of you. But if not, I'm guessing it might be a board update item. And then just, you know, reply to me if there's any specific questions you have. Let's say we're making progress. Yeah, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. You know, can always still focus on improvement and what we can do. We're excited to see the impact of the, of the curriculum that's being implemented at the elementary, moving the students on to each grade level. So you know, we won't really see the impact, in my opinion, that Bridges is truly having on our students until we see not only an increased trend at the elementary, but then also better preparing them to be successful in middle school, high school.
And the off out of the elementary. Appreciate what the staff administration's done in the buildings because now you see it. Yes, we measure.
And also credit to the board as well for buying into our sales pitch on some different programs to implement from a learning law standpoint, specifically using our ESSR funds. I saw Dr. Gray had that also on ESSR update. We haven't used ESSR funds for any new purchases. Those we would bring to you, of course. We've got, Brian, roughly sixty thousand, I think, somewhere around that, that we still have available to spend. That has been extended. Originally, it was to end September of twenty-three. It's been extended to September of twenty-four. We will probably come to you with some options, specifically maybe some fifth and sixth grade ELA curriculum. And then also some additional interventions to incorporate potentially into the elementary for reading and writing and then also math that are just extensions from the curriculum programs.
You mentioned, I think you said the eighth grade class had a good chunk of move-ins. Is that typical for the middle school to have more move-ins or more transient students than the other buildings?
I would say no. That class specifically, I think it was eight kids, something. That class specifically, I think it was eight kids, something that moved in. I went back through Central, and I don't have the, the number exactly. I have the increase of the free and reduced lunch increase that happened from the winter to the spring, and that was a huge jump, just with, with move-ins and whatnot. Right, I, I want to say it might have been 20 students. Forty, for some reason, sticks out also as, as a number, just kind of thinking through things. But we have seen a huge increase specifically at Central. But I think our eighth grade, for whatever reason, was, was the highest grade level that saw a jump from the winter to the spring. And we always see it in the high school also as well for a variety of different programs that we offer.
Are most of the students moving in just from other parts of Iowa?
Yeah, yeah. And then a few with the new open enrollment opportunity also. A few that are taking advantage of that.
Pleased to see that. I was, I, when I looked at that Friday, it's just like we, considering where we, the darkness we walked out of from COVID, seeing the walk backs to the fact that, okay, you've done some program implementations. I think we wisely spent our Esser dollars.
Yeah.
I would say, you know.
And, and also I think a restructuring of our TLC program also. We've incorporated literacy and math, PD leads, interventionists specific to those areas. I think that's had a huge impact. We had a reading interventionist, math interventionist, both at the elementary and in the middle school. Just because of the use of the Esser dollars, we kind of had to slide those positions off. But the individuals continue to serve in a TLC role. So they're still doing some behind-the-scenes work to be able to get data out to teachers and some, some strategies to.
That's very good hires here because of the Esser dollars that we came from the state.
Yeah.
So. Any else, any other thoughts, or would like to talk insurance now? Boy, it's insurance. Yes, four point, 5.1, let's get to the. The public, you'd be surprised, we actually had checked here a month ago. The, the views, there, there are not a lot of people watching this right now, but they'll go back to the website and, and look at it. You'd be surprised. So would you recap us on where we left it, here just a few months ago?
Yeah, so we have the total amount for the renewal at 406,690. We have optional quotes. First one being going up to 100% blanket limit for 8,300. Two buy-down deductible options for the middle school, high school, along with the elementary. Both of those totaling $7,000. Two linebacker options to go to $5,000 or $10,000 deductible. Moving the comp and collision on the autos to 5,000, and then the increase in the excess liability to 10 million. Would you like me to summarize what you guys decided, or do you want Tom to?
Sounds like a making a motion.
They did add it all up and got it all ready to go.
I think we had a wonderfully engaging conversation moments ago. Tom, do you feel like making a motion?
Sure, why not? So I would move to improve the EMC insurance renewal proposal in the amount of premium amounts, 406,690, with the additional optional quotes being accepted as items number one, two, three, five, six, and seven, and also accepting the linebacker with a $10,000 deductible, the savings of about 5917.
Motion in a second to renew our insurance with Midwest Insurance Company. I thank Melissa for coming in tonight and taking time with the board, educating us on what we could do on behalf of the agents of this district. And I think that we did make progress, and I suspect that you will see some things come out of this conversation. It'll be very tangible, and I'd like to think that it'll be better served, better operated. That speech done. Any further questions?
Melissa, what's that number?
A total of 4,008, 418,634. Thank you.
Okay.
Tom mentioned about those 3%.
That is the dollars that we'd be approving with approval of this motion. So we have a motion in a second. Last questions, count our dollar number, all in favor. All right. Opposed, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right. Brian, we're going to talk about our fiscal year '22 audit and.
The audit firm just wrapped up their work in fiscal year '22 audit. It's here within the last month or so. It was a new audit firm. We hadn't, hadn't had a new audit firm in seven years. The old audit firm has dissolved. They decided, well, they went all their own ways, but they decided that they weren't going to do our audit. Bringing in a new audit firm has been interesting because there's things that they came up with that I have not heard in the last 15 years about the old audit firm. So I took the memo that they provided to the board, and it's important materials, and responded to each of those items individually. Plus, there was some, there was some comments in the back of the audit that I also responded to. Basically, there's a lot of things that they're coming up with that need, basically need adjustment and we're at the time of the year when we can do these adjustments. Unfortunately, the fiscal year '23 audit has not yet been done. We have not made those adjustments. So the audit that we have for fiscal year '23 is going to come back and say basically the same thing as these deficiencies and the comments they had in the back of the audit report will probably come back in fiscal year '23 audit. Like I said, I made a, made a report out, responded to each one of those individual deficiencies that were in the memo, plus the ones that were in the back of the audit report. Basically, what it's coming to is I'm going to back through and look at all the processes. And I've got the cash procedures manual out there. It's, it was last revised in 2018. I'll revise that. The P card procedures was, I think I wrote that about two, three, or two or three years ago. I'll revise that and make, make the changes that they're suggesting in both those, in both those procedures manuals. There were other things that they came up with, like reporting to the board. And that was basically my oversight, and we'll do better from here on forward. Come tomorrow morning, I'll, I'll give the, I'll give the audit info, the audit report that I gave to you to the buildings saying there will, there will be changes and there will be changes coming when they, when they come back in the fall as far as for cash handling or any of the procedures. I guess I have, it's under action agenda, so we'll refer to that report for fiscal year '25. I'll take any questions.
I think Joe spoke to travel here at the last meeting. Didn't he not ask a question about travel, what was going on? And I think that kind of came out here too. I guess I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but I think he had something to say to that. And I know we, as far as when we do any asks for fundraising and whatnot, but it looks like we need to really make sure everything gets the board consent agenda, that it has a board review, a board approval. And I think that clears up a lot of this. Because once it comes to the agenda, it's for our, for us to pick it, pick at it and question it.
So just looking at, at the travel, what it kind of says as a recommendation.
Yeah.
It says the district does not currently have a process to document compliance with the policy. Before it says the policy, pre-approval will include an evaluation necessary of travel. So the reason for the travel and estimate of the cost of the travel to quality has improved district businesses. So that's not entirely true because in order to get a P card to make a purchase, I sign off on it and list what the, like max expenditure can be to be able to use the card and what the card is being used for. So, and, and actually the account it's going to be pulled from. So we do have a process for that. It's just not directly assigned to travel. It's assigned to the use of the P card and to the credit card.
Yeah.
So just in reading that, it just, we have it, it's just not under, I guess, the way that they like it with like a travel policy.
And the department P card is used for both travel and purchases, right? There's, you don't have a separate card for travel and a separate card for purchases, right?
Yeah, just a P card.
Yeah.
Something that they, they also hit at in the, their procedures is the procedures within the office. Well, we've got three, three people in the office. It's kind of tough trying to do procedures that they. Back in 2014, there was a guy written in Turk Control. I'll go through that guy. It lists out the procedures and what each person should be, even, even for three persons in the office. I think I can use that, and it'll be very helpful.
So are you saying you just bring Barb in, having some capacity to put some touch on these? Okay. We don't need to hire somebody?
No.
In, in reading through the audit, I was reading it with the reminder that this is kind of, like you said, Brian, fresh sets of eyes. Doing the audit for the first time in, how many years have we been using the previous firm?
We re-up them every three years, and I bet it's probably been 12 total that we've been using.
The same firm?
Yeah.
I wonder if, would, would you think it would be a good idea to change firms every so many years just to get a fresh set of eyes? I guess this kind of brings that into light a little bit, but maybe that's something that future boards can, can think of or consider.
Yeah, it's getting tougher, tougher to find audit.
Yeah, it may not be, it may not be a choice, I guess. May not be that many audit firms available.
Right.
You can make that a board goal.
That's a good idea.
I have them from time to time. I'm going to hold your breath, but it happens.
Okay.
I think you just made one.
Yep.
All right, side down.
I'll give it to you, Tom, that's a free.
Okay.
So explain what's happening on the child nutrition revenues. My God, we were in a very dark and deep hole. And what's, what am I reading there in the space of two paragraphs, Brian? Could you just paraphrase that for me?
Well, we went from, basically, the only revenues we were getting to the child nutrition fund, the federal funds. Everybody was getting free meals.
Yeah.
And this, this year, this year 2022, we started back in the, in the revenues where meals are part of the revenues. And basically, we hadn't connected with the nutrition department and their system to know what the accounting entries were for those.
So we weren't tracking the dollars generated.
Right.
And they're suggesting that we see on a monthly basis.
Yes.
The doll, that's a reasonable and easy one to do, isn't it?
Yeah.
That, that's part of a.
And that's the way we did pre-COVID. But we got a different system now through, through Titan that we need for that.
We can pull out that number and put it into a, an agenda.
Between me and Doyle, we should be able, come on, we have the information.
Okay.
But the balance of the food service fund is 500,000 plus now, so.
Who would have thought? Dr. Astmas, you're looking at the same stuff we are. Do you have any observations?
No. What I'm seeing, the only, I don't know, thing that I would have a rebuttal to would be like under expenditures for one, where there's two payments that exceeded $500 with a credit card.
Yeah.
Those only occur in emergency situations, and that's, and that's probably what these were. And people that typically have that occur, probably Dr. Gray, myself, or Joe Wakeman, for, for a purchase. All three of us, I believe, make a double check with Brian. Well, to let them know and essentially get approval that we're, that we're doing this because we know that it's, that it's an emergency situation.
Hearing that from your assistant superintendent, turning to the business manager, how do we make policy to reflect that we can do that with board approval so it never hits another audit?
That's my challenge.
Yeah, that's the challenge.
Yeah. How do you write that policy such that it is pulled out permanently from an audit by whatever firm? That it shrinks the issues that we are comfortable with the people that, as you just heard, are doing it, that they're operating in good faith, that it doesn't have to be seen as a detriment on our audit, annual audit? How do you do that?
Well, really, at this school district, encumbering funds has never been a problem because the administrators all know how much they have to spend, and they don't go beyond that. And it might be just a simple process of saying that, you know, we need purchase orders and encumber funds for, for anything above, above $1,000.
That's what I'm looking for. So why don't we?
But I'll make that recommendation.
Why don't you bring that back to us such that that just took that off the paper?
Right.
Because the thing is, if we know under special circumstances who's doing it, well, they're not doing it because it's a whim, they're doing it because there's a need. And it should not be reflected as a negative against the district.
Yeah, and I can give you a, a perfect scenario with our fiscal year ending June 30th. There might be something that we see as a need from, and have available funds that are still in that school year. But if we're to go through the PO invoice system, it's actually going to reflect to the next fiscal year. So you could make the argument that it's lose the money, a waste of money, so we're not using it. In my opinion, financially, it's a more financial way. And I know I had one of those with something that, that popped up for that specific situation sort of been two years ago, or put a PO, tried to get it in prior to the end of June, but we didn't get the invoice until after July.
So next year.
To next year. Yeah. So it's just a trick, I mean, there's just situations like that, that, that pop up. Or, yeah, there, I'm, I'm trying to think of what another one might be, but sometimes there's some curriculum things. Sometimes places don't accept POs. Some businesses don't, can only make a credit card, you know, purchase.
It's becoming more common.
It is, right. Yeah.
Well, it's just one of those places, if you want to talk about where you can pull that down and not be seen as in non-compliance, I would encourage us to get some, something that we can approve to make that go away. So who owns the, in a separate test, the district could not locate the invoices for charges relating to vending machine card readers to substantiate journal entry charges to the school nutrition program. Is that Doyle? Is that Doyle?
I have access to the program, and I could have located that information in the inventory department.
Okay. Well, on a going-forward basis, we just assume that's going to be part of it, so that they have access to it, so that lines out that.
Brian, is that something that was new to this, a new procedure compared to past audit?
I could say fiscal year twenty-two is when they were using the machines more than me.
Right. I remember ever seeing, doing exit audits on these things, I've never seen the machines talk.
Right, yeah.
Well, some of it was asked from the service director, never stopped the machine. And the current service director does.
I remember it being a huge point of emphasis for high school students as an ask to be able to have card readers within it, because of the lack of students carrying cash. Parents might not.
Well, yeah.
Accessibility-wise, it's definitely easier for students.
It's not like we're throwing that junk in there anymore, so. I mean, when I look at this and think about it, and I've asked Brian a few things, and then you listened to the conversation here, this is, people are looking at corners that nobody else ever looked in before, but we have the ability through not a lot of effort, I hope, to be able to make it just go away for the fact that we bring that knowledge to the board, the board can act upon it in a way that dismisses it or acknowledges it, and then all of a sudden, you're...
I would say I probably have something back to the board from the last meeting in August.
Anybody else have any questions for Brian? So it is an action agenda item, and we would need approval as submitted in this audit, taking into account that we have given direction and expressed any concern or desire to see things changed.
I move approval of the fiscal year twenty-two audit.
We have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty-two audit as was presented and discussed tonight. Any further final questions for Brian or administration? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an audit. Consent agenda.
Did you see how much that they wish to ensure the press box for anybody? About a hundred and eighty-five thousand. On account of we built like twenty-five. I looked at that in just like, oh my. But hey, they have to buy another one. So a central capturing kids' hearts PD lead. Erin Murphy, what does she do? She's currently a school council, one of the school councils. So that's a TLC position, so she'd be leading all professional development, specifically to capturing kids' hearts and attention and climate and culture. Losing track of a lot of names.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a new one. She was a learning team coach previously.
Okay.
Switched over to this position, which Brooke Praska previously held. She resigned, it's more of an opportunity.
Yep.
So we're here Wednesday.
Yeah.
So where is our high school's student council going? And where are they going? They're not going anywhere, they're selling bottled drinks and prepackaged candy out of the concession stand through the boosters.
Looks like they're using it to pay for the DJ.
DJ for the dance. Yeah, so it's just one night, was that homecoming, nine thirty? Yeah, yeah, so this is typical. So during the homecoming dance, they open up the concession stands. And they, yeah, so pop and candy and other items, whatever. And then that money, I'm guessing, goes to a couple of costs of the DJ.
Okay. All righty then.
I think the only overnight was the wife camp, which is annual.
Yeah.
And that's honestly what I was thinking of when I was speaking about going on a field trip and somebody walking through the woods, chaperoning a walk and then stepping on a stick or something, and who knows? Please don't get hurt. I didn't see anything to hurt my feelings.
That's a good one.
Do people have to request refund of lunch balance, or can they, or is that an automatic that's issued?
I'm sorry, we haven't.
Can people, do people, like graduating senior parents, do they automatically request, or do they request a refund of lunch balance, or is it automatically issued?
It's automatically issued if there isn't a sibling that needs to have the money transferred to them, sibling who might have it lower, still be at school in old grade.
Could a parent then choose to not accept it and just like pay it forward and put in a pool for future students that are not siblings?
I haven't heard of anything like that yet.
I have a year.
That's not a bad idea, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, you always, every year you can overpay your taxes.
Yeah. We just have to reclassify it out, accounts where you have that program.
But there's no detriment to the district or the program?
No.
Okay. I'm amazed, sitting on the resource center board, how many times you hear a random walk-in, somebody will drop a very nice check, because they've heard of a program, you know, something going on that Chris is doing with her program that they feel they want to reward them to do more of the same. I know Macey, you've sat there and heard those stories, because it just comes up at every meeting. So maybe, Leon, you might be on to something that, you know, we just do as a district, I don't know anybody else would be doing that. Because we always get upside down on some accounts that are uncollectible, and we just know that that happens. Every year.
My preference would be that they would do that, because typically, they're refunding the balance of the account, and the check sits there, and it doesn't get cashed, and it ends up in central state, handling property.
Maybe we should look to communicate with the district that on a going-forward basis, that here's the story they may or may not know, and this is a way to help the district and the people most in need. I don't know who's going to tell that, but I'm going to give Leon credit for starting the conversation.
Yeah, I agree. I think that part of the reason why the resource center gets people meaning that is because there's more, not marketing, but more word out there of like the HTR program.
Right.
That's important, is to share opportunities with the council.
They had a very substantial business family come in and write, there was somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars in, just because.
Well, anybody want to approve it?
Approval consent agenda?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda's in the bag. Board member comments? Got a month before we do this again, people. Trying not to forget how we all look. Macey, you're going to be a new mom?
Well, yes. Not new mom, um, you want a new baby.
Yeah, no, I have that in my family. My daughter gives birth at the end of August, so, yeah, no, we're having that.
Yes, so I most likely want to be here during the next meeting, June twenty-eighth.
Really, congratulations. I hope. Good news and good health to all parties.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm not having babies.
Well, I'm certainly not joining in.
I'm not.
Nothing for you tonight.
Got a chance to tour the rec center. The foundation had a meeting there, Tim Imronda, Mrs. Meyer hosted us, and we got to walk through. That, even in an unfinished setting, was, it's impressive, and it's bigger than you think, and I look forward to seeing what the community, and I hope the school's got a little bit of chance to use that, because I think that'll be a real win. That is going to be something. That should be wrapping up here this fall, so they open the doors. And our parking spots, we got out here.
Is it a ten, half tennis court set up in there? They could, they're temporary tennis courts.
I would think they could, yeah, because the sport court flooring, well, not sport court, that's like a flooring that's pretty useful for that, I would think. I think they've talked about how to pickleball, so they couldn't do tennis.
Temporary tennis. So I don't know if you all saw, but WHO announced their RV TV route leading up to the Iowa stake game. The data was selected as the final destination Friday, September eighth, against PCM. Oh, yeah, I like the chances. So that's a cool thing. I know Mr. Smith is excited about that, and like he always does, he'll put on a great show for everybody and get all the key people in place, promote our kids, our programs, our facilities, so that's, that's cool.
Be a good opportunity.
We got a great story to tell here.
Yeah.
And, yeah, that's how we get new talent, new families, new kids.
And the day before the game, that's...
Yeah.
We just got a very fun time.
Yep. Like I said, we're a month away. Tax deduction showing up, and everybody enjoy their summer, get done what you can, because it's time we come back, you'll be talking about football, state fair, back to
Final ISAP results.
Final ISAP results. So you're doing that AAU thing or team club sports?
Nonstop.
I know, I blam off that bandwagon.
Nonstop. Even the three-year-old now.
Are you kidding me? A three-year-old, come on.
He's got his buddies.
It's pretty cute. Well, yeah, and I got a two-year-old grandson that is just like, you know, you get, you just see the different levels as they progress up, and what they can't do, and things, and say.
His whole life, he's always the spectator.
Well, now he's...
Now he's the show.
Take a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
A motion and a second to conclude tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.